Being of January, or to me, July 16th. Sorry, I was looking at the minutes on my screen. And first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
Under God, indivisible. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is roll call. Doug, if you want to do a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Burley. Is here. Chumany is here. Farina is here. Hunter is here. Logan is here. Menendez is here. And Chair Stimek is here.
Thank you. There is a quorum to conduct business. Next item is approval of the agenda, and I would note for the record that there was a revised agenda that was sent out electronically this afternoon. So I would be taking a motion on approval of that revised agenda.
What's on that revised agenda, Mark?
Election of officers was added. I was going to handle an under old business, but I guess it was added as a formal item.
All of the agenda as amended?
A second. A motion by Menendez, seconded by Farina to approve the agenda as amended this date. Is there any discussion on the motion? I guess I got to look for hands. Seeing no hands up. Favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. The next item on the agenda is election of officers. So I guess first of all, I presume that all of the recommended reappointments to the board have been made by council. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, they were.
Okay.
I recommend, I nominate Mark to be chairman.
Motion by Farina, seconded by Menendez to nominate myself as chairman of the board. Is there any discussion on that, or are there other motions to be made?
Interject here on the process for the election by chance.
Go ahead, Melissa.
So for the the election of officers, no motion is actually needed until a second person is nominated for a certain position. Based on Mr. Farina's oral nomination of Mr. Stimek. Mr. Stimek, you would then have to accept that nomination. If there's no other nominations for that position, you would then be voted in by acclamation.
All right, very good. I will accept the nomination. Are there other nominations to be had? Hearing done, I would note that I was elected by acclamation. We now need nominations for the offices of vice chair.
Like to nominate Frank Farina for vice chair. Yes, accept.
I accept.
You have a motion to nominate Frank Farina for the office of vice chair. Are there any other nominations to be heard? Recognizing no other nominations, Mr. Farina is thereby elected by acclamation to the office of vice chair. And now we need nominations for the office of secretary.
Nominate Roseanne.
I'm sorry, Roseanne, I did not hear. Thank you very much. And motion by Farina, seconded by Logan to nominate Ms. Menendez for the office of secretary. Are there any other nominations to be had? Hearing none, I'll close nominations, and Ms. Menendez is elected to the office of secretary by acclamation. Congratulations to all of you. And we've got almost five months left to serve, so.
That's one more meeting.
Yes, yeah, it could be one more meeting, could be no more meetings. All right, next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the January 16th, 2020 meeting. And I would note as well that there were revised minutes that came out this afternoon. And I would be taking a motion to approve those revised minutes.
Can I, Doug, are those the changes that I recommended?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then I I move to accept the the minutes as amended. In all, there was some date changes for everybody's notification.
I'll second.
Mr. Burley, was that your second? All right, it's it's a little bit tougher because everybody's voice is coming out of the same location, so bear with me a second. So we have motion by Farina, seconded by Burley to approve the minutes of January 16th as amended. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion is carried, the minutes of January 16th are approved as amended. The next item on the agenda is the formal statement, and based on the fact that we have no public hearing items on which we will be deciding this evening, I will forego the reading of the formal statement. And since none of that would be applicable to this evening's agenda items. Moving on then to the next item is old business. Other than the election of officers, I'm not aware of any old business that that is coming before us this evening. Is that correct, Mr. Doug?
Correct.
All right, thank you. So having no old business, the next item is public hearings. As well, we have no public hearings that I'm aware of scheduled for this evening. So at that point, I will move on to item 10, new business. City of Frazier zoning code technical review. And Doug, before you get started with this, I just, I guess I wanted to have a question or just to set the parameters for this. So in the adoption of the zoning ordinance, the zoning board appeals has no official capacity in review and approval of that document. Is that correct?
That is correct, Chair.
Okay, I do appreciate, since we have so much dealing with the zoning ordinance and the interpretation of the zoning ordinance, your effort to inform us of pending changes and giving us the opportunity to comment on that. But officially, it's the planning commission and ultimately city council that has to approve the revisions to the zoning ordinance. Is that correct?
You are correct.
Okay. With all of that said, Mr. Palczynski, if you'd like to carry on and provide your presentation.
Great, thank you. Can everybody see the memo document on their screens?
At this time, I just see the title sheet or title page to it. The 10 zoning review.
Yeah, that's what I saw too.
All right, then let me start sharing again. How about now?
I only see your memorandum.
So. As you were all aware, and that as zoning ordinances change over time, land uses change, and it's difficult to stay current on everything that goes on. So one of McKenna's recommended practices is to periodically go through a deep review of the zoning ordinance. You know, most communities do it every 10 years or so. And just try to identify issues and see where the zoning ordinance is at. And then kind of develop a strategy on how to. So in Frazier, we've known that there are some conflicts in the ordinance. There are some different points of view, there are some different clauses that conflict with each other. So what we did is we, and actually Danielle, one of my colleagues, and I went through the zoning ordinance section by section and tried to identify specific things that we would suggest making changes to. That way, if when we implement those changes, and the next step, we have a, you know, more or less a checklist to go through to make sure we've hit everything and circle back. I think it's very valuable for the zoning board of appeals to be introduced to the process. Like you said, you don't have a voting obligation with the zoning ordinance, but you work with it and interpret it. And the end result of this process is to make the zoning ordinance better for you to use. You know, it's a tool for the ZBA and the planning commission to do their jobs, and we want to improve that. So some of the things we look at are the ordinance itself, your minutes. We've developed a summary of cases, and as Rosie shared with me, there's a, you know, a long list of potential ordinance amendments. We use our experience in other communities, we use changes to planning and zoning law, and just make recommendations for other best practices. That said, there are some best practices in Frazier zoning ordinance, you know, there are some things that are similar and from Frazier that I've recommended to other communities. Hey, you know, this is a great process for you to use here. So I think that's really important, too. We're not putting down any of the work or any of the institutional you know, energy that's gone into planning and zoning. We're just saying, hey, you know, let's take a deep breath. The quarantine gave us an option, an opportunity to to do this, even though there certainly are developments moving forward, and you will have a meeting coming up soon for a variance, but you know, here's a chance to to do a deep dive in zoning ordinance and go through it. So that said, what I'd like to do tonight is just kind of scroll through, I mean, this is this document is 31 pages long. I don't want to read them all out. But scroll through, I know Rosie called me earlier and brought up something important. I'd like her to bring it up when we get kind of to that section. I'm going to scroll through. What I want to do is introduce a document to you and get your input, but don't think that if you didn't input now, that you can't send an email or follow up at a subsequent meeting saying, I was thinking, you know, after we talked about this, that there you know, there are more things that we can go into. You know, the the next step in updating the zoning ordinance is going to include a reorganization of the zoning ordinance. For example, signs is kind of stuck in a section called environmental provisions, really signs merit their own section. That sort of thing will be adding hyperlinks in so that, you know, when you have a reference, you can click on it, it'll take you to the section that's referencing that sort of thing. And that's going to take a fair amount of time and work to get done, but in the end, it'll be updated. It'll be transferred to MUNO code, hopefully we'll ferret out all these issues. You know, the the planning commissioner weigh in, city council have the chance to weigh in and just kind of get, you know, the the ordinance to a current standing in 2020. So kind of the first thing we did with the ordinance is took a look at the definitions. And with definitions, you have a few things that you're looking for, and this is a, you know, a couple pages of our recommendations. You have definitions that aren't typically used anymore. Miller knees or haberdasheries pop up in various zoning ordinances. I don't know if they did here, but just as an example, though, you know, those over specific definitions that really just mean different kinds of neighborhood level retail for various items. Then you've got definitions that are in the definition section, but aren't used anywhere else in the zoning ordinance. So, you know, there there isn't a reason to have a special definition for it if it's not applicable to a regulation somewhere. And the third thing that happens that's pretty common is that regulations are snuck into a definition where we really want those regulations in the section of the ordinance pertaining to those, so that the the definition is the description of something, it's not saying, you know, for example, last night I was in a community where the definition for a mini warehouse said a securely fenced compound. Well, nowhere else in their mini warehouse ordinance discussed fencing. So having fencing just in the definition part was kind of an Easter egg that could have been missed. Frank, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I do. Are you saying that they need to come out, or they need to be put into another portion? You know, like what you just mentioned. Does that, are you recommending we take the definition out, or we put something in the make a recommendation to put something in the the rest of the the ordinance?
Well, typically, if we're not being, if it's not being used, you know, we'll identify to the planning commission, say, we recommend that you take this out unless you feel that this is you know, something that needs to be regulated somewhere else. You know, and and sometimes the terms are used as interchangeable, and they're really not. It's like we have a carryout restaurant, we also have a fast food restaurant definition. You know, we need to pick one or the other and and go with it. So there, you know, I don't think in any case we're going to say, oh, we have a definition for a you know, a haberdashery, we need to make sure we have a specific regulation to that. You know, we're going to say, hey, this haberdashery is just really a kind of store, we have plenty of regulations that address those, we don't need a definition in here. Does that make sense? Okay. So as you can see, this is what we went through and you know, drilling pads, got some, you know, an alarm fence was something that was in the definitions, things like that. You know, we'll certainly go through these again with the planning commission and take a look. And we also may add new definitions in that had to do with some, you know, upcoming changes. You know, as it happens, we're taking a look at the zoning ordinance at a specific time where there will likely be changes in use of, more uses engage outdoor spaces that may be less likely to transmit diseases or airborne viruses. So the the next section that we looked at was Article 3, which is begins the general provisions of the zoning ordinance. Article 2, we didn't really see anything with the application interpretation, other than some language editing, no substantive changes. So Article 3, something like animals are backyard poultry that aren't currently allowed, something desirable. And sure enough, I think that the resident out of the blue called this weekend is going to be asking that question. I I've heard that it's been contentious in the city before. Plan approval needs to follow the same the same process of site condominiums in general and vice versa. See, the brick requirement and alteration limitations. Facade materials are part of site plan approval, right, for several of the nonresidential zoning districts. Yet this section allows administration at the city to make changes. And you know, if the planning commission is the one approving the facade material, then they're the ones that need to be able to approve the change, not an administrative personnel. See, corner clearances are listed a couple different times in the ordinance. Engineering will reference, you know, provide some cross references to city engineering codes. Fences are contained in another section of the city's code, so we need to reconcile those. Those two sections of code. Garage sales have come up as being something that caused concern. We want to make sure city council and planning commission review the garage sale standards and see if there's anything that we should change while we're opening up the whole zoning ordinance. See, other things. Most of this is just clarifying does the language style. The zero lot line provisions have some requirements that reference fire code. So rather than what we should provide a reference instead of specific language, because that way, if the fire code changes, the zoning ordinance doesn't have to change also, just the reference will be updated. And also, one thing that has come up, and we'll make sure that anywhere in the ordinance, you know, we have places where we talk about permanent easements, whether they're parking or access or drive aisles. You know, not just requiring an easement, but requiring that the city reviews it, that it gets executed, then it gets recorded, so that it's, you know, a permanent in record easement also. That's come up a lot as we found some different places where just it never became the practice in Frazier, and that's caused confusion. General exceptions are kind of like general provisions, but includes some you know, a more narrow scope sort of things that the zoning ordinance may not apply to. One thing that's really important through the entire zoning ordinance that we'll want to work on is making sure that buildings and structures are appropriately used, they're not interchangeable terms. So, you know, we need to make sure that they're consistently used through the entire ordinance, and there are many places where the term structure is used instead of building. And you have a structure setback, you know, that means you can't have driveways or parking areas, it's not a building setback, so we need to be specific there. Under section 3273, it talks about height limitations and exceptions. So it provides kind of instructions on how to make a decision about what's allowable as accessory features of different buildings like church steebles or radio towers or whatever. But then it gives those instructions to the ZBA. And, you know, I'm a firm believer that the ZBA is great, but your role is really to review variances, it's not, you know, unless it's on a variance and is meeting the legal test for variances, the decision should stay at the planning commission. You know, lot area is redundant. Again, those are the sorts of examples. Now, a lot of the provisions that the ZBA deals with specifically are found in the environmental provision section. And these tend to include things like lighting, fencing, screening, signs have been in here. So we've got a pretty substantial set of steps to kind of consolidate the screening and fencing requirements. You know, particularly as they relate to different sections. So making some suggestions about updating specific tree and shrub types. Consolidating, moving the parking lot landscaping requirements into the same section as the other landscaping requirements, that sort of thing. Sign regulations are big. Push with the sign regulations are that in general, when you look at a sign and you're regulating it, you can't evaluate its content as part of the regulation. So like, for example, here where it says offsite real estate sign, well, any offsite sign, you know, should be regulated, not specifically real estate signs, so that potentially would not meet the test of if you have to read the sign to regulate it, you can't have that that rule. So that's example, we'll work through the sign regulations. There were also a ton of definitions about signs and try to standardize them so that they're based on their size and placement and time period, and not necessarily what they say. Yes, sir, Frank.
A number of years ago, back 10 years ago, an extensive study was done on signs that was never implemented by city council, and are you going to look at that and try and implement what was in that? That or is this not that type of review?
Well, no, I would, I would love to have any past work. See, I actually just got a lot of the old files from the previous planner, Patrick. But if you have that document, Frank, or if you said it was about 10 years old, I can look in the city's computer system and see if I can find it.
I kept a copy. But like the city, at the time, there was a, an ad hoc committee with the mayor, the people from ZBA, people from planning, and we all went out and looked at different signs, and and one of the recommendations was we wanted to move toward monument type signs rather than stanchion signs. Because we we felt that the look for the city was a more professional look in other communities where we did. So that's, you know, that could, would that be put into this, or would that have, you know?
I think we should definitely include that as part of the discussion. Sarah?
Yeah, um, thank you, Doug. I think that that's the perfect kind of level of information from that prior work, and that is something that could easily be carried forward. There's been a Supreme, US Supreme Court case since then that might render a lot of the standards unconstitutional, so that's sort of that content neutrality direction that Doug was talking about, but in terms of like the look and size and type of sign, those are things that could easily be carried forward.
Thank you.
You know, another thing I'd like to make sure we address, that's become very popular as a way to generate some expression and excitement is murals. So I'm making sure that the mural regulations are clear. If, as are expressed in the city. You know, several of our communities and several that I'm working in have specific mural standards, and it's really, you know, brought a lot of excitement to their areas. You know, lighting, we'll take a look at the lighting review standards and make sure that, you know, it's cross referenced with the site plan process. Parking and landscaping will well, the parking lot landscaping will get moved to the other section. Off-street parking and loading requirements. We'll talk about the kind of modern amenities that might go in parking lots, like charging stations, motorcycle spots, bicycle parking. Basically, give the commission more tools to plan for those areas, as well as evaluating the minimum requirements for all the parking spaces, similar to what the planning commission just did with industrial and commercial parking areas. We can adjust parking dimensions. You know, I don't think that, you know, I I wish we could say we can make parking spaces smaller, but the reality is vehicles are getting bigger and bigger, even as they're getting more fuel efficient. So you know, that's not So, you know, that's not likely to be able to happen, but there may be some provisions we can add for something like permeable pavement in the parking requirements that make that an option. With site plan and review requirements and procedures in Article seven, there are some subjective planning standards that I think we should take a look and see how they are expressed in the zoning ordinance. The planning commission, you know, believes if a site plan should have objective standards. But I will say that the information required for site plan review is definitely a part of the zoning ordinance that I have promoted to other communities that are kind of questioning, well, what, what do we need to require for site plan? So I think the, the standards in Fraser are really a model. And I've recommended them. I've also recommended because some communities don't have the clause in their site plans to say, you know, the planning commission can determine that if plans don't have all of the required information, that there's enough information there for them to make a decision. So that allows some flexibility between the commission and the city and applicants. Because sometimes a lot of you know, if part of a development isn't touching a particular requirement, like they're not changing any outdoor lighting, but they still need site plan approval. There's, you know, adding on extra steps of lighting plans, et cetera, are just adding cost to a process that isn't paying a benefit, a public benefit back to the city. So I think that that's a really great feature. We'll be updating the zoning map. Danielle's actually been working on that. And we'll be double checking any of the rezonings that have happened over the past few years. Let's see. The residential and recreation districts include the one-family residential districts, the two-family, or excuse me, the multiple family, and then there is a recreation district. Rosie, was this the section that had the easements in?
Yes, go up a little bit. Right, that, whoop, stop thirty-two dash one twenty-two. The second from last right here at five feet. Five feet in a rear yard setback. My problem with that is there's utility easements currently that are at six feet. I don't know if, if the current building codes, if they decrease that six foot rear rear easement. But five feet would pose a problem with that. It, it, it put the one foot into the utility easement.
While there's a lull, I don't, Doug, can I hop in? I, I didn't want to be rude earlier. You're probably wondering why there's, you know, three people from McKenna on the line right now. And I, um, I just wanted to say hi to everyone. I think at least Frank knows that I'm going to be your permanent ZBA rep. Susan is no longer with McKenna and Doug has a meeting conflict on the normal Fraser ZBA meeting evenings. So we thought it would make sense since he didn't have a conflict tonight for, you know, Doug to walk through the work that he and Danielle have been working on together. But, um, starting whenever your next meeting is, it'll be Danielle and I, um, rather than Doug and I. So I just wanted to say hi to everyone and not kind of over over serve you this evening. So I'll probably be signing off right now, but I look forward to working with you all on a monthly basis. I know, um, you know, we've met one another during trainings and everything. And I'm looking forward to it.
I'm sure. Yeah, and Sarah, as Sarah said, she'll be doing everything. One thing Sarah and I share is being prepared for meetings, so we'll be going over everything ahead of time, so. It's going to work out great.
Yes.
And to, this is chair. To potentially answer your question, so the Michigan building code, Michigan residential code provides special regulations for either main buildings or accessory buildings that are less than five feet to the property line. So I think that's probably where the five foot came from. I would presume that elsewhere in the ordinance, it would preclude the construction of a building, whether it be a main building or an accessory building from being located in an easement. But we have some areas that, that have no easements along.
But my concern is when you only, when you have defined easement. It was somebody looking like at this will assume that they can just put it there. They may not even know an easement exists. So that's my concern.
Yeah, that's, that's certainly the, the case. And quite honestly, these days, six-foot easements are very rare, that they're usually ten-foot and larger. So depending, depending on what the utilities are, they, they can be larger than that. So, but once again, so if there is no easement interference, then I think five foot would be an appropriate distance. But there should be language within the ordinance that in addition to the five-foot minimum requires or prohibits, I should say, the placement of buildings or structures within an easement to cover that. So if it's six foot, you gotta be six. If it's ten foot, you gotta be ten. If it's thirty-five feet, you gotta be thirty-five. You know, we've got some large water mains and high-pressure gas mains that have easements that are thirty-plus feet. And we don't want to have buildings or structures put in there regardless of what the minimum setback is from the property line.
Thank you. People will look for a location to make sure that accessory buildings are prohibited where they would disrupt or negatively, in fact, utility.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Doug.
You bet. So I want to pause real quick and, and, you know, we're about halfway through and I promised, I promised Joe it would only take about an hour. He may, he mentioned he may have another meeting to leave too. But, uh, one of the things about Fraser that I like is that the setbacks are measured from the center line of the roadway based on the roads future planning classification. But the difficulty's been is that that planning classification has always been in the future land use map or the master plan, not on the zoning map. So people don't look at the zoning district, see the road classification and then go to a chart that has the, um, the correct future right-of-way classification to measure their setback. So am I on a industrial road? Am I on a local road? What am I on? So I think through this effort, we're going to add those few, those planned road right-of-way classifications to the zoning map to help keep that information all in one place. You know, so here's an example of those average or that those proposed setbacks for different areas. Going right in, we you know, found a few small conflicts in the multiple family residential district. We talked about, you know, putting in a table instead of listing out incentive formats and different measurements. Yes, sir Mark.
Yeah, Doug, I just noticed that you got the minimum floor area of the three-bedroom at two hundred. That's supposed to be like a thousand or twelve hundred?
That should probably be twelve hundred.
And then, uh, addition, at the beginning, uh, one of the things you wanted to take out is efficiency is, is that, are you going to call that something different, like a studio? Or did you meant a different type of efficiency?
I'll, I'll double check that for sure. So now, one of the things I'm doing as we scroll through this is I'm adding comments directly into this draft so that we won't forget about them. We'll be able to go back. Okay. Recreation district. Generally, most communities, one of the recommendations for all of the technical evaluations I've been involved with are to create a recreation district that talks about specific public plaza, public land uses. And the city of Fraser has the district, but a lot of its, you know, properties that are used that way, particularly publicly on parks, aren't zoned recreation. So I think I'd like to make sure that we identify those areas and zone them appropriately on the map. So getting into office and commercial districts, you know, kind of consolidating the long list of things like the different kinds of offices. There could be different kinds of retail businesses. You know, it's really the intent of the district is for the focus to be on, you know, the area that serves. Yes, Frank?
Well, when you mentioned parks and district and that, are you, are you also going to, and you're mentioning the zoning map and putting things on the zoning map, are, are you going to look at the amount of park space we have? And compare that to other areas and make recommendations as part of that zoning map?
That'll be, that'll be part of the master plan discussion. So I, I don't know the outcome of that, you know, based on the there are standards. The, the National Parks Management Associations and Michigan Parks and Recreation Association puts out, so we'll account for that. So the plan may say something like, based on standards, the city of Fraser has an adequate amount of parks or the city could use opportunities to improve its parkland to come up to current standards. We, I wouldn't just recommend rezoning unless it's actually being used as a park. All right, again, just going through some different language updates, consolidating use statements and types. Making some suggestion, suggested use changes. See. Again, with the industrial control district kind of. See, we were, yeah, just eliminating a lot of the background purpose information. You know, we're really just making, so this is a sexually oriented, oriented businesses. We've got some language, some sample language that's updated. We'll put in there. See, planned unit development should be in its own article and not lumped in with special land use approval, even though they do sort of follow the same process. Think the, I, I don't know that the PUDs been used that much in Fraser, so we may want to take a look at seeing if it's you, seeing why, or talking about why it may not have been used extensively. See, and then the rest of these are, are use standards that I don't think the zoning board of appeals may have come in much contact with, but, uh, so all of these special land use approval standards are specific uses that don't just go through site plan, but they have to have a public hearing and then the planning commission can add additional requirements to mitigate any potential negative impacts that they perceive. So this, this recommendations through all those things like changing churches to places of worship. You know, like we have a poured cement wall requirement for daycare centers, which is a really big expense. And maybe a barrier to entry for some of those uses. You know, funeral homes and you know, many funeral homes are adding crematoriums. Those are not discussed here in the special land use standards. You know, those sorts of changes. For commercial extraction of oil, gas and any other mining, there are specific languages in the zoning enabling act. We should double check and cross-over rinse to make sure that they're up to date here. Know those sorts of things going through. See. We, I reviewed the zoning board of appeal section. I feel all the standards related to that are are really a model practice. You guys do a great job here in Fraser. I'm not just saying that because you happen to be the meeting tonight, but you know, really it is a great, a great system and the ordinances are well-written. Got a few things with the administration side to add in. You know, things like making sure that city council proving fees is only mentioned in one location rather than several locations throughout the ordinance. So again, I just want to go through the conclusions real quick. You know, while the zoning ordinance does have some opportunities for improvement, there are also several sections that are model practices that, you know, I know I've recommended to other communities to take up. District regulations, we can clarify. We're going to propose a system of tables that, um, are more numerically clear rather than having a lot of the information buried in text. And then there will be a consolidated schedule of regulations. Supplementary regulations are kind of sprinkled throughout the ordinance. We really want to try to button that down and get them all in one spot. So that when somebody is going to find something, they, they are confounded with an Easter egg later on. We want to make sure that numbers and measurements are presented consistently. So that if, you know, like, for example, at McKenna, any number one through twelve, we write out and then put the number in parentheses and then the unit of measurement after it, if it's over, if it's thirteen or over, we only use the number. In some communities, I write the number all the way out unless it includes a comma in the numerical expression. So just settling on that and how we identify measurements, making sure the same throughout the entire document just makes it much clearer to read and then people can get accustomed to it. Making sure those regulations aren't hidden in different spots. Making sure that any planning commission modifications are called out and clear. They're not buried. Making sure regulations don't conflict. Making sure that the ZBA responsibilities that are, are what's enabled by Michigan statute. And the reason this is important is certainly not to ta- take anything away from the ZBA. But once the ZBA makes an action, it can't be appealed to the city council. It can only be appealed to court. So if we give the ZBA responsibilities that are questionable as part of its its role, and then they get appealed and they're going to court instead of the city council maybe being able to weigh in. So, you know, that just opens up potential risk and, you know, the court sending something back to the, the city because it's not following a, a model procedure. So we're just going to make that recommendation. And again, you've got a great ZBA section. Let's, you know, stick to that. There are some other sections like Sarah mentioned, the signs. There's been new court precedents that have come up that make sign regulations. They need to be content neutral. Making sure all the public hearing requirements and notifications are consistent, consolidating those in one section. The zoning map for front yard setbacks. So those are the summary of the recommendations. As you see, we went through the entire zoning ordinance with a really fine tooth comb. So if, you know, after this meeting, there are things that you think of, please don't hesitate to point them out and we can make a note of it. You all have been working for with the zoning ordinance for, on average, you know, a fair amount of time and we value your input. Does anybody have any other questions about the the work we've done and kind of our comments about the zoning ordinance?
If I may, this is the chair. I guess a couple of question or comment. So the typical planning process is that the city adopts a master plan and then develops ordinances to further those principles adopted in the master plan. I know that the master plan is, I believe, still under review right now. Is there, are we, are we getting the cart before the horse or is the timing of this overall implementation such that the update to the master plan will be concluded first before the zoning ordinance revisions go into place?
That's a really great question and I'm glad you asked that. What we are hoping to do for our process right now is to take the current zoning ordinance. And unless there are things that we feel create a an immediate risk, like potentially some of the sign issues, try to get those fixed and reorganized. Now, there are several issues that have come up with the building official. That we we just want to get in and get the language consistent so that there aren't conflicts and get it to where it's more user friendly. And I think that it's valuable to do it now instead of waiting until the master plan is all the way complete. Because the master plan is going to have a list of recommendations that say, you know, that promote the objectives of the master plan. They may, I don't know what those are going to be yet, but it may make recommendations on different kinds of housing, different kinds of uses. You know, so then potentially there, as you mentioned, there will be additional zoning ordinance changes to implement those master plan recommendations. We want to have a good base for those implementation steps to happen on. And right now, the feeling is from the administration that that base is a little shaky and we need to get it updated and consistent before we start making the bigger changes that the master plan may recommend.
I guess I just don't want to or for efficiency. You know, and in it in it ain't cheap to publish a new zoning ordinance. Even in the the current days of electronic publishing, there's still multiple, you know, printed copies that that go everywhere. That if we do these changes, let's say January of 2021. And then the master plan report comes out and then we redo it in July, you know, there's there's a certain efficiency that's lost and under that. But I appreciate the the acknowledgement of the the general order of the planning.
For sure. And I would I would characterize most of the recommendations that are coming out of this, that they're they may be substantive, but they're not necessarily going to be introducing new topics or new considerations that haven't been thought of that are anticipating tomorrow. They're more, okay, what are we doing today? And how do we get the zoning ordinance to align better with the city's functions today?
Well, it kind of goes back to Mr. Farina's comment regarding the recreational zoning that the development of the master plan will probably tell us whether or not we need to look for more opportunities for recreational zoning. And then that may lead the direction of what we do with the zoning ordinance and or implementation of potentially city initiated zoning requests.
For sure, for sure. You know, and definitely a lot of those and that kind of function, I believe, Frazier also has a a rule that well, I don't know that, but generally to acquire public property is a big discussion. So, you know, I if I would be concerned that if we don't invest the time in updating and reorganizing the zoning ordinance now. The the big conversations about implementing the master plan through zoning are going to get put off until we have a better starting point.
Or so I appreciate.
So. All right. Well, with this item, there's really no formal action for the ZBA. Again, I appreciate you all sitting through 45 minutes of listening to me speak to go through it. It's a lot to digest, but it's, we've put a lot of thought into it. And we feel we've been pretty thorough. But I please, you know, Frank, and everyone else, I really value your institutional knowledge and appreciate you bringing up things like that, that sign study and evaluation that was done. You know, that's things that we might not necessarily know about. And as you are all well aware, the longevity of the city from the existing staff is shrinking. So I'm we're definitely finding out about resources and I did now, I look forward to continuing this project. We'll be presenting these to the planning commission on Monday at their meeting. So please know I'll be bringing up the comments from tonight and any more comments, I'll be amending this report and updating it for for their meeting on Monday.
Thank you, Doug. If there are no other comments from the members, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the zoning activity report. So Doug, we get to listen to you for a few more minutes.
Well, hopefully not too long. So every year, the city council gets a report of activity from the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals. And in this particular letter, we've also talked about the activities that we undertake as a group and as, you know, McKenna functions as the planners and zoning administrators for the city. So, you know, we view it as, you know, we're a part, we're a part of the staff and a part of the operation of the community. So we've got, we summarize the planning commission meetings. We summarize the actions of the zoning board of appeals meetings on pages two and three, and then we talked about the ongoing tasks, the ongoing staffing of the different boards and commissions. And then again, going through this technical evaluation, which we anticipate going kind of going right into our updated zoning ordinance. Which we're actually, we've done some really expeditious work the past six months or so. And we've got a good system in place for turning the workaround really efficiently and quickly and error free, most importantly. So I know Rosie talked to me earlier today and the she mentioned in the past, the ZBA has sent some pretty detailed reports about their meetings. So I just wanted to verify, you know, with the the board that this level of detail is what you're accustomed to. Or if you'd like more to let me know and we can, we can include more detail in the ZBA meeting summary. But the planning commission's already looked at this document and endorsed sending it to council for their part. So we wanted to get it to the ZBA so that you folks can review and endorse it or or ask it to be modified so that we can get it to council. So they're aware of all the great work we all do together.
All right, at this point in time, I'll entertain a motion to approve and forward to city council, the 2019 zoning board appeals annual report.
Yes, Frank.
I make a motion to approve the 2019 ZBA report as submitted.
Second.
Whoever was the second, could you tell me your name? Because I couldn't tell.
This is Hunt.
Okay, we have a motion by Farina, second by Hunt to approve and forward the 2019 zoning board appeals report to council. Is there any discussion on that motion? Recognizing no one wishes to discuss it, all those in favor say aye. You're opposed. That motion carries. And I got to go back up to my agenda. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. I'm not aware of any unfinished business that is necessary for us to conduct. Is there anyone else that has any items?
I'm sorry, if you don't mind if I interject for a second, my internet cut out for a second. Remind me who the motion and support was for the previous action item, please.
The motion was by Farina, the second was by Hunt.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And let me also take a moment. I don't know that this body met Danielle, who's one of my associates at McKenna. We mentioned Susan's not with the firm any longer. Wendy, I believe, had come to a couple of meetings. And Wendy left, I believe, in January to pursue a better, an opportunity. So we wish her well and thank her all of her for all of her assistance. But Danielle, Danielle's been at McKenna as long as I have. I think we came on at the same time at the beginning of last year, and she's going to be helping on all of Frazier's work, but specifically you'll see her for preparing the minutes of meetings. And chairs, I just see are aware, one thing I've added to these presentations I do is a quote at the end of it. So you know, as we go on to adjournment, there is a quote at the end that I'd like to read out. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is planning mission liaison, Mr. Farina.
Oh, well, you just read the, we took up the 2019 planning and zoning activity report as as you just read. We also talked about medical marijuana caretaker and patient growing standards and what was going on there. And then we, most of our time was, that was kind of an information kind of thing for us. And most of our time was spent on the master plan and the the where we stand on the master plan and really it's, it's kind of stalled with the COVID thing. Our next step was to get input on a survey from the public and like my, I was going to give it to all of you people to get your inputs into the master plan. But I have, you know, that's kind of stalled and we're going to talk about that next Monday again. So with that, that that was the extent of our last meeting.
Any questions for the planning commission liaison? Recognizing none. Next item on the agenda is public to be heard. Is there anyone from the public on this meeting that wishes to be heard? See, no one with hands up or hear any questions coming through. So close that portion of the agenda. And Doug, the item 14 on your presentation. Is this where you wanted to have your closing statement?
Oh, I was just
I think that's at the end.
Yeah, I can go ahead and read it as we're all thinking.
Mark doesn't like us to speak.
Okay. Where did that come from?
Go back to the previous item. We added commissioners' comments and items of interest and concerns. And I thought we had, I thought we had that. So you were going to go around to the various commissioners and say, hey, have you got anything, you know, and they would do do their thing.
Okay, I'm I'm looking at the approved agenda on the right hand side of my screen, which we proved earlier this evening. And it's got item 13, public to be heard, and item 14 is adjournment.
Oh, well, on the one I'm looking at on his publication there, it says item 14 commissioner comments and interest and concerns.
I this is probably my error. I apologize for confusion.
So you could have added that to the agenda too today.
Yeah, but anyway, since it's not there, I am sorry.
So that's better, right?
Move on.
All right. So just real quick, here's a quote I found that I thought was great for today and it was, and so with the sunshine and the great burst of leaves growing on the trees, just as things grow in fast movies, I had that familiar conviction that life was beginning over again with the summer. And this is by this gentleman who's F. Scott Fitzgerald and the Great Gatsby. Just wanted to leave the group on a positive note and just as we thought summer was beginning and everything was moving fast again, hopefully it continues to and we're not we're not all back into the preventative lockdowns that we were a few months ago.
Amen. All right. Thank you very much, Doug. The the last item they have on the official approved agenda is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Let's make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Yeah, motion by Menendez, second by Burley to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Everyone stay safe, wash your hands and I thank you all. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you.
Bye, Danielle. See ya.